Just a tip, just a advice.
Okay, welcome everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily breath and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Okay, thank you. We will have our next public workshop here in the meeting room on Tuesday, April 15th at 10:30 a.m. There will be an Enterprise Zone meeting here at 10 a.m. Wednesday before the public meeting, Commissioners' public meeting, and then we will resume and have our next meeting Wednesday, April 16th at 10:30 a.m. here in the meeting room. Danny Malloy, today is wear blue. I see that we, oh, excuse me. Today is wear blue day, and in honor of that, we are wearing blue.
In honor of what?
Well, it's the child abuse. Here I have, right here. Trumbull County wears blue, April 9th, Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is to end violence against children and be concerned if you see something, say something. This is, has in conjunction with pinwheels.
Very nice.
Okay.
Congratulations.
He pointed, he pointed you right out, Commissioner.
But I hear you're wearing blue underwear today. Okay, Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
For Bernard.
Here.
For Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated April 1st, 2025, and the regular meeting dated April 3rd, 2025, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
No second.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here, yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
For Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number six is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to renew the three, three-year lease with Thomas Shelby and Company for a chair fleet of 14 chairs for the Trumbull County 911 Center. These chairs are replaced once yearly for each year of the contract at a cost of $8,779.32.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to purchase replacement servers for the Trumbull County 911 Center. This work would be completed by the existing CAD vendor ID Networks at a total cost of $142,246. The purchase consists of supplies or replacement or supplemental parts for a product or equipment owned or leased by the county, and the only source of supply for the supplies or parts is limited to a single supplier. The purchase consists of services related to informational technology such as programming services that are proprietary or limited to a single source.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eight is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to purchase a replacement 911 recorder for the Trumbull County 911 Center from the existing vendor Motorola at a total cost of $143,000. This purchase is exempt from the bid process under RC 307.86B. The current, the current variant recorder is no longer supported due to its age and technology. In addition, there is a statewide Marx radio update in May that will further necessitate the need to replace this existing system.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number nine is to adopt a resolution acknowledging the work of our dedicated 911 staff for National Telecommunicator Week, which is celebrated the week of April 13th through 19th, 2025. National Telecommun- Telecommunicator Week honors the men and women providing life-saving emergency services to the residents of Trumbull County.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. We have a presentation, and if, Tacey, if you would please come up, we're going to take a picture. We'll have Commissioner Malloy read the resolution.
Okay, Tacey is our Director of the 911 Center, and Tacey, we present this to you for your staff. It's a resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners proclaiming April 13th through April 19th, 2025, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Trumbull County, Ohio. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police-fire emergency medical services, and when such an emergency occurs, a prompt response is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Public Safety Answering Points, PSAPS, within Trumbull County. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact that our citizens have with emergency services and are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, EMS personnel. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the public safety answering points of Trumbull County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients by exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners hereby proclaim April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Trumbull County, Ohio. And we congratulate each and every telecommunicator in Trumbull County for the commitment and dedication to displaying the performance of their jobs, which is critical to the health, safety, and well-being of everyone in Trumbull County. Thank you, one and all, for a job well done. Signed, Board of Trumbull County Commissioners. And let's give these telecommunicators a round of applause. This literally, this literally is the hardest job we have in Trumbull County. It's in the worst working conditions for pay that's not near what they're worth, and they come to work every single day, and they just flat-out save lives. That's what they do each and every single day. And I don't think anybody in this room would trade places with them even for a day, or any county worker would want to trade places with them for a day. It takes a very special person to work there. We're fortunate that we've got about 20 of them, and hopefully we'll have a few more in the future. It's a really elite fraternity. It's a team that nobody really wants, enjoys doing unless you have something special in your heart, and you're that type of person. We're fortunate that we have about 20 of them there now.
And I, I second everything you had said, Commissioner. Tacey, I just want to thank you for doing the job that you're doing there. You are definitely a major added bonus since you've been there, and we will guarantee you, 911 will be seeing better working conditions, and we're committed to that. We thank you and all the employees that work there. We know it's a very volatile job, and as Commissioner Malloy had explained, it is one that you, it takes a very special person to do that. So we thank you and commend you on your service. Thank you.
Also, not only do the Commissioners, but I'm sure the residents of Trumbull County also appreciate everything that you and the employees do out there, and we just condemn you, commend you for doing that, and just, like Commissioner said, just hang on. We're trying to solve the, the problem out there.
I'd just like to say thank you to all three of you guys for recognizing us. Obviously, it, it's one of those thankless jobs, as you said, that one week isn't enough to show the appreciation to those dispatchers doing the job every day. But I know hearing from you guys that you, we have your full support moving forward to find a new location, that's going to be good news to them back at the office. So thank you for saying that.
Yep. Thank you, Tacey. Can you, we're going to take some pictures.
I'll tell you, we get, we get calls occasionally to the Commissioners' office, someone doesn't like their taxes, someone doesn't like the pothole in front of their house, someone doesn't like something they read in the paper. Imagine being a telecommunicator there.
Yeah.
Every single call, like 90,000 calls a year, and nobody's happy, and they're all calling in crisis mode. It's a tough position.
Item number 10. Receive and place on file for record purposes the Financial and Compliance Report, 2024 Annual Report for Shelters for Victims of Domestic Violence from Family and Community Services, Inc. and subsidiary Someplace Safe, filed in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 3113.39, and filed with the Ohio Attorney General's Office, as submitted by Lauren Webb, Director of Someplace Safe, and received by the Commissioners on April 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Yeah, so with discussion, this is another entity, Someplace Safe Commissioners, that I, I know we all agree. This is a wonderful service for Trumbull County. It's one that is much needed for those that become displaced or find themselves in, in dire straits. So we would like to thank Someplace Safe for, for what it is that they do for our county. Yes.
Item number 11 is to acknowledge receipt of the proposal for TRU 1st, 2025, countywide road improvements for paving programs for the townships of Bezetta, Braceville, Brookfield, Champion, Hartford, Howland, Hubbard, Johnston, Liberty, Newton, and Warren, the Village of Orangeville, and the City of Hubbard, in addition to the Trumbull County 2025 Road Improvements Program, which includes the resurfacing of Jacobs Road and Hubbard Township, and Warren Sharon Road in Vienna Township between State Route 11 and Ridge Road, and to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the TRU 1st, 2025 Countywide Road Improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the company listed, Enbridge Gas, Ohio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 13 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed, Ron Yack Brothers Paving.
Motion to approve.
One second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 14 is to enter into a waterline extension agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the Mahoning County Board of Commissioners to provide water service to Mr. Richard Spencer, 4834 Pritchard Old Town Road in Newton Falls.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 15 is to authorize change order number one to the contract with Straight Line Interiors, LLC, in the amount of $375, bringing the new contract amount to $19,595 to pay for costs associated with one 10-yard rolloff dumpster at $300, and pay for at least one removal return $75 of same for the Trumbull County Planning Commission's Ceiling Renovation Project.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
For Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 16 is to authorize advertisement of a notice of intent to request a release of funds for projects listed below in a local newspaper on April 10th, 2025, and authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute all necessary documents related to the release of funds for Trumbull County CDBG Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, project year 2024.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 17 is to complete and submit paperwork to the Ohio Department of Taxation for the approval of transfer of funds for security services from the Special Tax Levy Fund to the County General Fund per ORC 5705.24. The approval of transfer of funds is needed from the Ohio Department of Taxation to pay for security services provided by the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office to the Trumbull County Children's Services. Children's Services will be responsible to compensate the county sheriff as invoiced on a monthly basis for the total amount not to exceed $113,795.89. The sheriff's office will furnish one deputy to Children's Services to provide police and security services and duties. Services will be provided for 12 months, beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 18 is a routine liquor permit to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested. This is a new permit, Class D3, Columbiana Foods, Inc., doing business as Giant Eagle, 6348 in Liberty Township.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
For Bernard.
Yes.
For Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 19, also a routine liquor permit transfer, not requesting a public hearing. This is K&amp;G Brookfield LLC, doing business as Penn Ohio Quick Mart, to True North Energy LLC, doing business as True North Energy 136, and this is in Brookfield Township.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 20 is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to enter into a contract with, in the amount of $617,045 with LDB Custom Specialty Vehicles through the GSA U.S. General Services Administration Purchasing Contract Federal Procurement Program for the acquisition of the Trumbull County EMA Mobile Command Post Vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and with discussion, Mr. Hickey, thank you for your services to an EMA what you do. This vehicle is a very, very heavy-duty vehicle, and it's going to benefit our county immensely in situations of emergencies. In addition to that, these are all ARPA monies, which I believe we saved $50,000 in waiting for that purchase, Mr. Hickey. So just want to commend EMA, and you know, this vehicle that you'll notice it. If, I hope we, I really hope we don't have to notice it, but if we do, that command vehicle will come in very handy for our county.
We noticed, and what kind of brought this along is one, we needed some backup stuff at the fairgrounds. When there's things that happen at the fairgrounds, we needed some form of central communication point. Secondly, when they had the train to Rome went south of us, Mr. Hickey went down there, and he saw professional command vehicles and professional services come in from the government and other counties, and we realized that our, our command vehicle up here was a donated trailer that was mouse-ridden, something you went and camped in at Mosquito Lake for the weekend, that smelled like mustn't mildew. And we said, we can do better than that. So we, we asked Mr. Hickey what, what, what he would need, what he would like. He gave us his professional input, and we found a professional unit that will be able to be utilized at festivals, fairs, any type of crisis, tornadoes, and we will, we'll have more than adequate service to provide to the public when that happens. And so we appreciate you having your, your big vision there, John, and, and getting us a, a great price on this. We allocated $1 million. He was able to find a good deal at $617,000 that leaves some room, some meat on the bone, equip it the right way and not cost us more money out of other funds to equip it properly. So I'm looking forward to ribbon-cutting of that thing.
I also would like to thank you. I have a, when do we expect to receive the vehicle, and when could it be ready to be operational? Sure.
John Hickey, Trumbull County EMA. Um, we, I'm being told that we should have it here in the county no later than the last week of June.
Of June?
Of June, yeah. Now, after we get it, there'll be, you know, radios, you know, decals, you know, little stuff that we're going to do here locally, but it'll, and, and the thing is, other than, you know, installing the radios, it's turnkey. I mean, if we had to use, if something came up, if it came here on the 29th of June, and we had to, you know, we needed it, the police, whatever, we could have it there for the third.
And, and one other, where are you going to house this unit at?
Well.
Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That's up to you guys.
I know where you'd like to have it, I guess.
Be, currently, it'll be at my office off of North River.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Item 21 is to amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated, and Commissioners, this should say April 3rd, 2025. Item number four that read to approve expending funds originally allocated by the American Rescue Plan Act Memorandum of Understanding for the Trumbull County Fairgrounds 4-H Building and Related Structures Project with Amos Welding in the amount of $18,000, revising total contract amount to 624916. Amendment is necessary to clarify that Amos Welding will receive a total of $18,000, and the memorandum of understanding amount will increase by $18,000 for a total of $624,916.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
For Malloy.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and just with discussion, so you know, these are ARPA monies. Any of these added costs are already consumed by the ARPA, and these aren't additional monies. So these change orders are part of the ARPA that had already been, that had already been agreed upon. So just so our residents know, these aren't additional monies.
Item number 22 is to amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated April 3rd, again, 2025. Item number five that read to approve expending funds originally allocated by American Rescue Plan Act Memorandum of Understanding for Trumbull County Fairgrounds 4-H Building and Related Structures Project, and this is with 84 lumber in the amount of $10,000, revising total contract amount to 634916. Amendment is necessary to clarify that 84 lumber will receive a total of $10,000, and the memorandum of understanding amount will increase by $10,000 for a total of $634,916.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 23, to amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated April 3rd, 2025. Item number seven that read to approve expending funds originally allocated by the American Rescue Plan Act Memorandum of Understanding for the Trumbull County Fairgrounds 4-H Building and Related Structures Project with Ron Store Commercial Sound in the amount of $82,91, revising total contract amount to 718847. Amendment is necessary to clarify that Ron Store Commercial Sound will receive a total of $82,91, and the memorandum of understanding amount will increase by $82,91 for a total of $718,847.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
For Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 12122G4, preparing for conducting reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services.
Second motion.
For Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Okay, this shouldn't take very long. We'll come back, and then that wraps it up, and we'll be able to go to public comments. Okay, this shouldn't take very long. We'll come back and then that wraps it up and we'll be able to go to public comments. ...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to O R C one two one two two G four preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reject the fact finding report findings and recommendations issued by Philip H. Sheridan, Jr. on April second, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. Okay, that concludes our public meeting. We're going to go to public comment. We hold this to three minutes. Please give us your name and reason for comment.
Mr. Glenn City and Isles, I'd just like some sort of transparent explanation on this rejection for our people that work hard over job and family, where the majority of the funding comes from the state. You guys sit up here and reject it? How about a little explanation?
It's a pending thing now, pending negotiations are ongoing now, but I would say in my vote, it's not in the best interest of the workers, the county, or the citizens here. They could do better, in my opinion.
Who could do better?
The whole process.
It was a fact finding by an independent arbitrator that found some for you, some for them, but this is just, this is ridiculous. Are you, by rejecting it, are you looking to?
Let them go back?
Bust the union?
No, I'm looking for them to go back to the table and find something that's better for the employee and the county and come back with better terms that I think they'll be happy with.
Better than what you just?
I think there'd be a lot of upset people if we accepted it on both sides.
I think there was a vote that they accepted it, correct?
I don't believe there was a vote to the union yet, right, John?
I believe the union met and they voted and they accepted it.
John Gargano, J F S, the union did accept it. I think it was Friday they had their meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gargano.
So ongoing, you're saying that negotiations will be better than they are right now for the employees?
That's my hopes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Tacey McDougal, nine one one director, just wanted to give you a brief update on our nine one one review meeting that we had yesterday. I know, obviously, Commissioner Malloy was there, but for Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Hernandez, just want to give you an update that the board did recommend for us to move forward with the health department as our location pending, obviously, funding for the new nine one one center. I am working with our consultants and the architect to get a initial phase one cost of some renderings. That way you can utilize those documents to help hopefully facilitate getting funding at the state level or through grants. So just want to give you an update as they did select that location per the feasibility study as the optimal choice.
Yes, thank you, Tacey, and I've mentioned it on several occasions, I had the opportunity to take a tour of that, and I believe it's going to be a very wonderful facility for all our employees there at nine one one, definitely.
I haven't had the opportunity to tour it yet. If we're looking at that, maybe the whole board needs to tour it so we can all look at it together and see what kind of questions we have on that, and also looking at, you know, what it's going to cost us there per month, you know, exactly what we're going to be paying for and what the costs are going to be.
As far as the utilities and whatnot.
Right, yes, yeah.
Understood. I know.
And maybe you can set up a meeting that we all can.
I'm sure we can do that.
Yep.
Sure. I know currently that space is being utilized by, I believe, employees from the city of Cortland, who is having some work done on some of their facilities, so they're temporarily being housed there. Obviously, we have some time, not too much time, but we have some time, so I can make that happen and make sure we can get you guys a tour and find out what those costs would be while we're doing the forward progress and hopefully working with the consultants to get those drawings that you would need to help facilitate the funding.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, we're in public comment. Any additional comments? Okay, if not, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, everyone.